We do have one housekeeping item before we open the public hearing. Our counsel tonight, Robert McLaughlin, has left his firm, Hudson Russ. At our December 3 meeting, under our housekeeping document, we appointed Hudson Russ, and specifically Robert McLaughlin, to be our counsel. So that means the board needs to make a decision on how we want to proceed. I would suggest the board consider appointing Robert McLaughlin under his current firm PC. Is that the appropriate way to describe it?
Correct.
For the moment, and I would ask for any discussion or comments from the board.
Is it a one-year appointment?
It's a, I would describe it as a not more than one year. And what would be appropriate to say here, Bob, as far as your attentions?
I expect to be at a new firm that's very similar to my old firm within a few weeks.
So we make the appointment indefinite?
No. The appointment would be for a year. And then I expect, when I finalize my arrangements, we'll come back and ask the new firm for the appointment.
Bob Kerry is our institutional knowledge. As all of you on the board know, at least for the terms of your service, he's done a very fine job assisting myself and the board in carrying on the Montgomery IDA activities. I've confirmed with Bob that he's willing and able and has the time to continue serving us as counsel.
Do you need a motion?
I need a motion. Motion by Matt, second by Steve. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Look forward to continuing work with you, Bob. Moving on to the public hearing document. The intention of this meeting tonight is to hold a public hearing, and I have a number of details to go over. It would be by this agency, the Town of Montgomery IDA. Project beneficiary is US EF Sailfish LLC, after which I'll consider the company. And the location is here in the Town of Montgomery. And the hearing was scheduled and noticed for tonight at 5:30. I'm Jeff Christ, the chairman of the Town of Montgomery IDA Board in connection with the project and the subject of this public hearing. I might take this moment to introduce our board. So everybody is appointed with them, starting on my right, John Dixon at Williams, to my left, Robert Santo, Steve Rinaldi, and lastly but not least, Matt Stoddard on my far left. Thank you for being here. Today I am holding this public hearing to allow citizens to make a statement for the record related to the involvement of the agency with the project, hereafter known as the proposed project for the benefit of US EF Sailfish LLC, the company. The proposed project consists of the following. A, one, the acquisition of an interest in approximately 187-acre parcel of land located at New York State Route 17K and 747, also known as 635 International Drive in the Town of Montgomery, Orange County, New York. The construction on the land of an approximately 1,018,880-square-foot facility with related site work and exterior improvements, and the acquisition and installation therein and thereon of related fixtures, machinery, equipment, or other personal property, collectively the equipment, all of the foregoing to constitute a warehouse distribution facility, which will collectively be known as a project facility. B, the assignment and granting of certain financial assistance within the meaning of section 854-14 of the Act with respect to the foregoing, including potential exemptions from certain sales and use taxes, real property taxes, real estate transfer taxes, and mortgage recording taxes, collectively known as the financial assistance, all as approved by the agency for the benefit of Blue Water One LLC on November 12, 2019. And finally, C, the lease or sale of the project facility to the company or such other persons or entities as may be designated by the company and agreed upon by the agency. I have more to go, unfortunately. I think there are a couple more seats if you want to squeeze in, anywhere for people who are standing. Is Brian here? Could we move a couple seats if we need to?
Brian?
Thank you. As disclosed, at the special meeting of the agency held on December 3, 2019, the company's predecessor, Blue Water One LLC, assigned the application submitted to the agency in January 2019 to the company. The company and the company's representatives discussed the assigned application at that time. After such disclosure, the agency scheduled this public hearing pursuant to the Act. The agency is considering whether, A, to undertake the project as assigned to the company, B, whether to provide to the company certain exemptions from taxation with respect to the project as determined by the agency on behalf of the company's predecessor, Blue Water One, for the project and project facility on November 12, 2019, including, one, exemption from mortgage recording taxes with respect to any documents, if any, recorded by the agency with respect to the project in the office of county clerk of Orange County, New York, or elsewhere. Exemption from, this is number two, exemption from deed transfer taxes on any real estate transfers, if any, with respect to the project. Three, exemption from sales taxes related to the acquisition, construction, renovation, and installation of the project facility. And four, in the event that the project facility would be subject to real property taxation if owned by the company but shall be deemed exempt from real property taxation due to the involvement of the agency therein, exempt from real property taxes, if any, with respect to the project facility, subject to the obligation of the company to make payments in lieu of taxes with respect to the project facility. If any portion of the financial assistance to be granted by the agency with respect to the project is not consistent with the agency's uniform tax exemption policy, the agent will follow the procedures or deviation from such policy set forth in Section 874-4 of the Act prior to granting such proportion of the financial assistance. Doing okay?
Great.
I intend to provide general information on the agency's general authority and public purpose to provide assistance to this project that's proposed. I will then open the public comment to receive comments from all present who wish to comment on either the proposed project or the financial assistance contemplated by the agency with respect to the proposed project. The legal authorization and powers of the agencies of this agency are provided by the provisions of Chapter 1030 of laws of 1969 of New York. And those laws authorize the agency to promote, develop, encourage, and assist in acquiring, constructing, reconstructing, improving, maintaining, and equipment correction, equipping and furnishing of manufacturing, warehousing, research, commercial, and industrial facilities, among others. I'm getting there, thank you for your patience. Purpose of this public hearing pursuant to Section 859a2 of General Municipal Law of New York. Prior to the agency providing any financial assistance of more than $100,000 to any project, the agency, among other things, must hold a public hearing pursuant to Section 859a of the Act. And this proposed project may exceed $100,000. I don't know, let's get too much here. Since a proposed financial assistance to be provided by the agency with respect to the proposed project may exceed $100,000, then prior to providing any financial assistance of more than $100,000, the agency must hold a public hearing on the nature and location of the proposed project and the proposed financial assistance to be provided by the agency with respect to the proposed project. After consideration of the application received from the company, the members of the agency adopted a resolution on December 3, 2019, the public hearing resolution authorizing the chair of the agency, myself, to conduct this public hearing with respect to the proposed project pursuant to the Section 859 Act. The chairperson of the agency has caused notice of this public hearing to be, A, mailed on December 13, 2019, and on December 16, 2019, to the chief executive officers of Orange County, the Town of Montgomery, Valley Central School District, and B, published on December 18, 2019, in the Mont Gil Valley Times, a newspaper of general circulation available to the residents of the Town of Montgomery, Orange County, New York. In addition, the chairperson caused notice of this public hearing to be posted on December 19, 2019, on the agency's website, and also on a public bulletin board located here in this building at 110 Bracken Road. Copies of this notice of public hearing are available on the table up front, and unless there's any objection, I am going to suggest waiving the full reading of the notice of this public hearing and instead request that the full text of the notice of this public hearing be inserted into the record of this public hearing. Does anyone object to the waiving of the public hearing notice? Seeing none, I will dispense with reading that. The comments received today at this public hearing will be presented to the members of the agency at or prior to the meeting at which the members of the agency will consider whether to approve the undertaking of the proposed project by the agency and the granting by the agency of any financial assistance in excess of $100,000 with respect to the proposed project. Concerning written comments, the notice of this public hearing indicated that written comments could be addressed to myself, chairperson of the agency. And so far, we know of written comments have been received prior to tonight, have included an email from Beverly Mertz, email from Nina Schneider, email from Seal Van Sant, email from Ursula Lutner, letter from the Valley Central School District, and email from Virginia Osterhau. These written comments will be attached to the transcript of this public hearing. Before I open the public hearing to public comment, I would like to introduce Don Chase of the company, who will describe the project in further detail, as well as identifying the intended tenant for the project and project facility. Don, welcome.
Good evening, Chairman. Mr. Chris, members of the board. My name is Don Chase, part of the Blue Water Property Group. As you know, we are the developer for Project Sailfish, applied to this board back in December of 2018 for financial assistance relative to the project, which, as Chairman Chris just said, was ultimately granted this past November of 2019. We are here today to discuss the assignment of that financial assistance package to US EF Sailfish LLC, subsidiary of USAA LLC, which will own the property going forward. The assignment was highlighted in our original application, and material economic aspects of the project are unchanged. We will continue as Blue Water to be involved in this project through the development. As a brief update since our last discussion, we have fully completed our permitting process on a state, global, and national level, including site plan approval grant granted by this planning board from the Town of Montgomery, and are prepared to begin developing the project. As requested, Chairman, I have with me lay representatives from our partner, USA Real Estate, as well as from the project occupant and long-term tenant, Amazon.com. Although Blue Water has been the face of Project Sailfish from a local level, we have been working with USA and Amazon since July of 2018. Paul Segretto is manager of Industrial Asset Management for USA Real Estate, and Brad Briggs is senior manager of economic development at Amazon. Each are prepared to make a remark to the board. Paul?
Good evening. Paul Segretto, managing director, industrial asset management at USA Real Estate. USAA is an insurance company. We are wholly owned subsidiary of that insurance company. We invest in real estate to keep insurance premiums low for military members and their family. We will be the owner of this project. We've been here for a long time. It's important for us to be here for the assignment of the incentive package, which is customary in a development of this nature. We've completed upwards of 40 transactions with Amazon across the country, and we have a strong relationship with them, as well as Blue.
Thank you, Bob.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is Brad Briggs. I'm a senior manager on the economic development team with Amazon. We are the prospective tenant for this facility pending the completion of our ongoing due diligence, as well as completion of lease negotiations with USAA. If this facility does move forward with us as a prospective tenant, it would be a fulfillment center in our national or global network. It would be a non-sortable facility, meaning that it would contain products of a larger nature, patio furniture, appliances, things like that. We are prospectively going to employ 800 full-time employees at the site as per the application. Those employees will all have a minimum of $15 an hour and comprehensive benefits. Thank you very much for your time this evening, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Brad. I will now open this public hearing for public comment. And it's, I'm supposed to document the time. 5:49. Bob has me well-trained. By way of operating rules, if you wish to make a public comment, please raise your hand, and I will call on you. Please wait to be recognized. Once recognized, please stand and state your name and address for the record. Please keep your comments to five minutes or less, so all those present today may have a chance to comment for the record if they so choose. If your comments mirror those of someone who has already spoken, you may so indicate and then relinquish the podium to another speaker, so that all views represented at this hearing may be heard. When everyone has had the opportunity to speak, I will conclude this public hearing. A record of this public hearing will be prepared and reviewed by the members of the agency in connection with the agency's consideration of the proposed project. Again, the purpose of this public hearing is to solicit public comment. We are not here to answer questions. However, we will, in the course of this public hearing, consider questions if we have the information to answer the questions, and there is sufficient time to consider such questions. I will now ask if there is anyone in attendance who wishes to comment on either the nature and location of the proposed project or the proposed financial assistance being contemplated by the agency with respect to the proposed project. For the record, please state your name and indicate your comments on either the proposed project or the proposed financial assistance being contemplated by the agency with respect to the proposed project. Brian, would you like to start?
Absolutely. Good evening, everybody. This is my first meeting as town supervisor in front of you, the Industrial Development Agency. First thing I want to say is thank you for your service to the town. It is really appreciated. My comments are based on a discussion that we had at my reorganization meeting, which took place last Thursday. And we had a discussion as a board on a number of topics. Obviously, I think we all know and have seen how advertised it's been that the town is in need of an updated comprehensive plan. That was a big part of our discussion. Also part of our discussion was your public hearing this evening. And it was felt by a majority of the board that we wanted to make some statements regarding what you will be talking about this evening. So I'm going to read this letter, and then I'm going to have some more comments afterwards. I read on behalf of the Montgomery Town Board. As you're aware, a newly constituted town board was seated as of January 1, 2020. We are aware that the first public hearing with respect to the above-referenced application submitted by US EF Sailfish LLC is being held before the Town Industrial Development Agency on this date. The application relates to the approximately 1 million-square-foot warehouse to be considered on New York State Route 17K. Set forth in the application and the notice of public hearing dated December 13, 2019, the town board is also aware that this application seeks assignment of the approvals and benefits previously granted by the agency from Blue Water to Sailfish. The purpose of this letter is to raise certain points for consideration by the agency prior to any vote on the current assignment application. It is the opinion of the town board that the agency should reconsider its participation in the project and whether Sailfish should be granted any financial assistance or incentives by the agency. In the first instance, it is now essentially common knowledge that the contemplated project being assigned to Sailfish is the Amazon Company warehouse and distribution facility. The assigned financial benefits sought by Sailfish include, but are not limited to, exemptions from certain sales and use taxes, real property taxes, real estate transfer taxes, and mortgage recording taxes. Page 4 of the application states that the estimated value of the total requested financial assistance is in excess of $25 million. According to a recent Bloomberg report, Amazon's approximate market value is near or exceeds $1 trillion. The financial assistance at issue here, therefore, represents approximately 0.0025% of the company's value. Conversely, the real property tax exemptions, if granted, total $21,500,000. Obviously, these exemptions would have massive indenture to long-term financial consequences to the local taxing authorities. Secondly, the agency is reminded that Medline Industries, a nationwide manufacturer and distributor of medical equipment and supplies, recently withdrew the application for the same types of financial assistance it previously submitted to the agency, and is nevertheless proceeding with its development project. Although Medline is an extremely large and profitable company, Sailfish Amazon is exponentially larger and certainly will not suffer any consequences to its existence and operations should there be an instant application be denied. Finally, the agency is respectfully advised that Sailfish is in the process of applying for billing permits with the town's billing department. The town board believes that the company is moving forward with its plans to commence construction by virtue of the approvals already granted by the town.
I'm sorry, can you slow down a little bit?
I will submit this as well for the record. In the opinion of the town board, the primary purpose of granting benefits by an industrial development agency is to attract new businesses to an area when it is critical that financial assistance is the only way to facilitate a project. Due to the inherent geographical benefits of the Town of Montgomery, as well as the substantial financial strength of the applicant, Sailfish, like Medline, should proceed with the project without agency involvement. Accordingly, it is simply unnecessary for the instant application to be granted. For the foregoing reasons and others which will undoubtedly be placed in the record before you by other stakeholders within the town at this public hearing, the town board respectfully urges the agency to take the following actions. Keep this evening's public hearing open for multiple sessions to afford those who cannot appear this evening an opportunity to be heard on the issue of great importance. Upon due deliberation, determine that the application for assignment of the approvals previously granted by the agency on November 12, 2019 should be denied. And upon further deliberation, determine that the November 12, 2019 agency approvals should be withdrawn. Thank you for your consideration. And I just want to add one other note. There was a notice by Kristen Brown, our councilwoman, on one of our boards, on our town board, that there was a difference in language as opposed to the seeker financial statement, and I'm going to submit this to you, Chairman. It actually speaks to the sewer treatment plant, and that the language specifically states that it would be developed and heated to the town at our request, but the actual language is different, and I'm going to show this to you.
Okay.
And I'll submit it for the record. Hopefully, we can take a look at that language and make a tweak. And from a procedural standpoint, this is the last thing that I want to be doing. Because we just took office, and the board felt strongly, we felt it was important to air this concern, but in a perfect world and in the world that we're going to create here in Town of Montgomery, we're going to have a comprehensive plan that's updated, we're going to have all the rules set forth, and we're going to make sure that our zoning is the way it's supposed to be, the way that we want it to be as a community with a conversation that's going to include a ton of public participation, so that we don't have this issue, so that we are one team, moving forward together. The last thing that I want to do is be up here and be in a situation, two years of work being done by both the applicant and all of you up here, and then have a statement like this made from a town board. That's certainly not something that I want to see happen in the future. So hopefully, working together, this is the last time something like this happens. I hope that you take into consideration the comments today, and I will submit them to you, Mr. Chairman, for the record.
Thank you, Brian. Mike?
Thank you, Chairman Chris. Thank you, board, IDA board. My name is Mike Agno Stakis, A-N-A-G-N-O-S-T-A-K-I-S. I am Orange County legislator representing the towns of Newburgh and the towns of Montgomery. I am the legislator representing this district where this project is moving forward, and I want to make it very clear, I am here tonight speaking on behalf of myself as an Orange County legislator representing this district, no one else, except that I am also speaking, I think, on behalf of the taxpayers of the Town of Montgomery. So I think, believe it or not, most all of us will be in agreement on just about everything. We want the project to move forward, we think it's a good location for such a project, it probably is going to give us a lot of jobs, it'll give us construction jobs, it'll enhance the economy going forward, it's everything we want. The company will actually get many benefits. It will get mortgage deductions, sales tax exemptions, and 485B exemptions, which they could automatically apply for, so they will get taxually falsed. Where we disagree is on that final step. Do we move forward with that final tax dollar, which is the IDA grant of a pilot, for this particular company? Or any particular company? Now, you're in a very tough position, because you have people telling you a lot of different things. I've heard people tell you, it's an automatic coupon, everyone gets... Well, if you owned a restaurant, I ask you, would you stand at that door and hand a 50% off coupon to every single person that walked in there? I bet you wouldn't do that. I bet you would take each case individually and study it individually. Let me give you two examples before I go on to this particular case. A few years ago, in the Town of Newburgh, there was an auto dealership that wanted to move forward with building another huge showroom. A lot of construction jobs, a lot of future sales jobs, a lot of impact for the town. And the same people that'll pitch to you that they ought to get a pilot, that every company ought to get a pilot, pitched that that company should get a pilot. Well, the politicians, the elected officials of the Town of Newburgh stood up, and they backed down, they didn't get that pilot. Well, that dealership was a Ford generation dealership that'd been there on the same spot forever, making plenty of profits, and that new showroom was a mandate by corporate headquarters that said, you must break the two brands into two different showrooms. They were going to do it, they weren't going to go anywhere, but they wanted the taxpayers to foot the bill of that new construction, or they were turned down because of the pressure. This year, you have an example that you know a lot better, the Medline situation. Here's a company, and again, it's always preached, if you don't give them these breaks, they're going to leave, they won't build, they'll go somewhere else. Dealership, Medline. Medline was in Hamptonburg the year before they came to you. They said, if we don't get the breaks, if we don't get the zoning approvals, we're leaving the state. Well, they didn't get the zoning approvals. What did they do? They turned around and bought a property in Montgomery. Then they came to you and said, give us the pilots, otherwise we're going to leave the state. Well, for whatever reason, the pilot wasn't granted, they weren't going anywhere, they had bought that property, they built the property, and the differential on that pilot that you didn't give them was an extra $1 million a year for the taxpayers of the Town of Montgomery. Medline was in Hamptonburg the year before they came to you. They said, "If we don't get the breaks, if we don't get the zoning approvals, we're leaving the state." Well, they didn't get the zoning approval. What did they do? They turned around and bought a property in Montgomery. Then they came to you and said, "Give us the pilots, otherwise we're going to leave the state." Well, for whatever reason, the pilot wasn't granted, they weren't going anywhere, they had bought that property, they built the property, and the differential on that pilot that you didn't give them was an extra $1 million a year for the taxpayers of the town of Montgomery and the school district. Let me put in proportion what $1 million a year means. The town of Montgomery budget that they just voted on is a $10 million budget. That $1 million means a lot to the taxpayers. Now we have this situation. You don't give it to them, they won't come here, they won't build. Well, first of all, I don't think you should be giving it to them because when I read the original documents under the projected profit, I couldn't find where the company was listed. It actually said, "Please provide the projected profits." It says, "Applicant views this information as proprietary for its confidential applicant." I ask you, please, show of hands, how many of you knew it was Amazon? I only saw one or two hands go up. That means the other ones didn't know it was Amazon. I say that you decline it on that basis alone if you don't know who it is. Now we know it's Amazon. Okay, well, what do we know about Amazon if you studied the case individually? We know that Amazon, as was mentioned, is a huge company. Does anyone know what the highest market valued company in the world is? Not Amazon. Apple's the highest. Amazon is right behind them at just under $1 trillion. Anyone know who the richest man in the world is? That's right, I hear it, Jeff Bezos at $113 million.
Billion.
Billion, I'm sorry. Billion is correct. So, the company isn't going anywhere. Their goal is, right now, 24 hours fulfillment, but they've stated that their ultimate goal is same-day fulfillment, and if you read their literature, they need to be at locations that are as close to interstate highways as possible, their own words. They need to take, their own words, as many miles out of that travel of that package as possible. You can't find a better location than this. I could throw a stone from the location to the 84. I bet if they were offered the property at a premium tax, they would accept it because it's so good. All right? So, they're not going anywhere, they've committed a million and a half already on it, they've got the building approvals that they're going through, they're going to be here, the question becomes, where does that extra $1 million on average a year go? Now, I'm going to tell you, a few years ago, the richest man in the world was asked, because they are notorious for getting tax breaks and using every trick in the book to get tax breaks. He was asked, "How come you always ask for these breaks?" And his answer, and I'm not paraphrasing, was, "I'd rather have the money in my pocket than someone else's pocket." Well, I'm going to tell you, I'd rather have that million a year in the taxpayers of Montgomery's pockets and not the richest man in the world. (applause)
Sean? You're next.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Board. I am the newly elected Highway Superintendent Sean Mears, and sitting down to go through budget process and things we have going on in the town of Montgomery, we currently have three bridges that have been written up. One's closed down, we have two other ones that are shut down. And I saw that the Highway Fund full pay for this project is about $130,000 a year. Two of the projects come out to about $110,000, so just this one year would pay to fix two of our bridges and we could set something up to where we could actually get things in place to take care of a bridge a year, box culverts, replacing things, repaving our roads. And I feel with a company like this, 24 hours a day pounding our roads, whether they say it's 84 or not, it's like Legoland coming in. I know the back roads of Ocean, am I going to take the main road and deal with all the traffic or take the back road? All the people here are going to take the back roads, it's just going to increase traffic on our roads, and I would really appreciate if you considered making the highway tax pay full to make up for the amount of traffic that's going to hit our roads. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Sean. Mike.
Good evening. I'm Michael Sussman of Ocean, and I represent a number of the community members who come to the office and ask for assistance with regards to this project, so I address you in that context. First of all, I wanted to compliment the new town supervisor for his presentation and Mr. Anagno Stakis, while he and I disagree to some extent on this, I think the essential point that you've heard is critical. Subsidization for the wealthiest in the society with the profound income inequality that we have in our society is fundamentally wrong. The IDAs have broad authority, and that authority should be utilized to rectify income inequality, not perpetuate it. I heard the gentleman from Amazon say that the jobs pay $15 an hour as a starting salary. If you aggregate that to a 40-hour week, that's $30,000 a year. What family in Orange County can reasonably survive on that sort of wage? Where is the housing in our communities for individuals earning that sort of wage? I also heard the gentleman say 800 jobs. That's nonsense, and I'll tell you why it's nonsense. The industry he represents is one of the fastest automated industries in the United States. Those who know anything about warehousing will tell you that 800 jobs today are 200 jobs in five years. That's the nature of that industry. High levels of automation, extraordinary levels of automation, which are not being explained to this board and are in fact all over the country being operationalized. Now, the fact of the matter is that your community's comprehensive plan, as the new supervisor mentions, has not been reviewed for literally a generation. The studies which have been done by this entity fail miserably to analyze cumulative impacts, which are impacts which are going to derive from the plethora of like projects in a similar geographic area. None of the environmental studies look at cumulative impact, including that by one of the wealthiest corporations in the world. They're trying to get away by cutting corners, and those will be legally challenged because they are factually inadequate. I agree that you've spent years looking at the project, and I understand there's been a change in the political climate in your community, and I think at this point it's important for you all to recognize that, but also recognize the objective reasons why this sort of subsidy to the wealthiest in the society is inappropriate. It's fundamentally wrong. Thank you. Thank you, Mike.
I'm a little bit short. Hi, Kristen Brown, Browns Road, and technically a council member of the town of Montgomery Town Board. First, I'd like to say I echo Brian's sentiment in his letter, I think it was very well done, and I absolutely stand behind him 100% on that. But just for points of clarity, just because I'm a little bit more specific on things, in regard to the wastewater treatment plant, the application states in Section 3 on page 10 that the plant will be developed and deeded to the town of Montgomery. Similarity, paragraph 11 on page 14, the application states, quotes, "will be deeded to the town of Montgomery and to be formed sewer district for the purpose of future municipal service," and it continues, end quote. This is not an accurate representation of the current state of the project. The secret findings adopted by the town planning board and the town board by prior resolutions, which has been submitted to the agency, notes in paragraph 17 on page 32, that while an offer of dedication will be made by the applicant, the town is under no obligation to accept the offer of dedication. This time, the town has not been presented with an offer of dedication and has certainly not taken any affirmative action to indicate future acceptance of this facility. So I ask, this is removed from the application as it is a direct conflict with the secret findings that have been adopted by private boards. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristen. (applause) Susan Popburn, Town of Montgomery.
Same thing that I would echo what Kristen just said about the sewer treatment plant, but I also wanted to point out, New England Industrial Wastewater TR-16 Standards designates and identifies, a wastewater treatment plant is the single largest, most expensive asset in any community, and it is solely at the taxpayer's expense. The proposed Sailfish project is utilizing the entire parcel, leaving no room for subsurface land treatment technology which is superior to any wastewater treatment plant. This project is relegated to devising an onsite sewer treatment plant due to lack of space and then dumping it in the taxpayer's laps by deeding it to the town. This is much like the failed water system at Lakeview Drive, which was done by a developer and given over to the town, and it's nothing but an endless taxpayer nightmare. This is not how you cite what will become the most expensive asset in any community. When you're building a wastewater treatment facility, you cite it and you plan it and you establish it based on sanitary sewer engineering plans. You don't just take it from someone else and then deal with it. It's a huge mistake. The clean water is a finite resource that needs to be protected for future generations, and the Tin Brook is identified as a receiving water for the mega warehouse sewage flow, and it's also a source water for drinking water walled in. The right thing to do would be walled in and the town working together to upgrade it to an A rating, not a B rating, because it's a source of drinking water going into the aquifer. Successful project design should have one priority above all others, the long-term protection of precious clean water in our lakes, rivers, and streams, and giving multimillions in tax breaks to an unknown entity skirts a very criteria that protects our town now and in the future. The documents do not show where this megalithic box is a benefit to our town. The business of mega warehouses, and now we know who it is, is replete with labor violations of the worst kind. I think this is a big mistake. I also do not see anywhere about decommissioning bonds. Where are the plans and bond dialogue for decommissioning? When this building is empty, it's huge, it will become our town's problem. It is the tax permanently polluted, it is the problem that will permanently pollute our aquifer. Now, I mention this because the other similar problem like this on a much smaller scale is the subdivision of the Skibitzky site, where if they subdivide off that part with the landfill and stop paying the taxes, the town will be stuck with it. This is just a much larger scale. I wrote this up in letter form to turn it in because I was dismayed when I saw the pro Sailfish letters were, when I looked at them personally, they were a form letter, and three came from within one household. So I thought we should have some authentic dialogue about the project. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. (applause)
Good evening. My name is Chris Mealy, M-E-L-E. I'm the president of Concerned Citizens for the Hudson Valley. Many of the members of our organization, which is in excess of 120 people, are people from Montgomery as well as other areas, although I reside in Hamptonburg. I look at this application that you have before you, and I have very specific reasons as to why you can't even consider it. But basically, I look at it in three different ways. One of them is competency, one of them is ethics. What we have to keep in mind in ethics is you're not the one who gets to judge, we do. So full disclosure is imperative, I go to many, many conferences. A full CV on each member would go a long way here, especially considering the public has no say as to who gets on the IDA. In addition, the public has no input on the IDA as to who gets the contracts and who gets the tax breaks. This is actually a very good thing. Most IDAs don't even have a public forum like this. School boards have no seat at the table, which in the case of the IDA actually increases the school tax for the community. So in effect, this is taxation without a voice. Lawyers often work for the applicants or their sponsors and couldn't possibly give solid advice to anybody as they have a vested financial interest in the outcome. I don't know if that's the case, I don't assume that it's not the case with you, but it's very common on many of the IDAs.
I represent the agency.
Pardon me?
I represent the agency.
Regarding the new application, this is far from a mere name change. On page five, the applicant will not have any FTE jobs, the applicant will provide blah, 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 blah. It's transparency, we know now it's Amazon, but it wasn't evolved in the original application, so the application is no longer valid. USAF equals USAA Real Estate in San Antonio, Texas. They did the Amazon Warehouse in Ballmont, Texas. On page six, item two, all IDA benefits will pass directly to the occupant. How do you have the power to assign these benefits to an unknown entity? You prior to this night didn't know for sure who it was. On page seven, there's a question on criminal offense, bankruptcies for the people named above. There are no people named, only LLCs. Competency. Page nine, two C, are existing buildings abandoned? Yes. If yes, how described how the house will be removed? There's nothing said, no information. Information in the DEIS states that this house will be moved and restored. That gave a significant boost to their UTEP number, which now must be adjusted downward. Two D, photographs as an Exhibit A? It states that it's an Exhibit B, another error. Page 10, wastewater treatment plant, I think that's been covered, I don't need to go in there. On page 11, between item one and two, there's a paragraph omitted, that was in the original application, which states that occupancy will apply separately to Town and Montgomery IDA for its personal FFE specific to its use. Why did this disappear? It's not the same as the original one at all. Page 14, will the project be sold or leased to a municipality? Yes. And then it goes on to talk about the wastewater treatment plant again. The planning board didn't recommend this. Who's paying for the new sewer district? Creation, hookup, et cetera. Have you asked any of these questions? You're just accepting that it's going to happen. And that is to your benefit, which it is. Does the company intend to lease, et cetera? The answer is yes. And the remaining required information, it says required information on your application is blank or confidential. No transparency again. The applicant will not add local employees, so how can you possibly, that's what it says in your application that's sitting in front of you, how can you possibly use any employment statistics that were provided to you unless you have a statement from the company that will be hiring those employees? It's transparency again, it totally defies logic. The $4 million on page 22, state programs disappeared. That figure got rolled into private sector financing, why is it different? The original application had $4 million in state programs. Page 45, notes a new and separate agreement with the fire district. Again, transparency, did you even know about this? Has the board seen this? The real kicker for me is the multiplier, which is on the last page. I think they've applied some of Merlin's magic here. I estimate that the multiplier is in the Upjohn Institute study, it's something like a 1.4 in this instance. There's a publication which all of you should read, or should have read, and I urge the town board to read it as well, actually, everyone in Montgomery should read it. It was done by the Rural Pennsylvania, which is a legislative agency of the Pennsylvania General Assembly, and it's called the Economic and Transportation Impact of Warehouses on Rural Pennsylvania. This publication is a very good source of information on the effect of warehousing. Has anyone sought out this type of information? Well, that's part of your due diligence, and it's part of it, but transparency tells us that the partnership came up with that multiplier. This publication says that the research also revealed that in 2004, warehousing activities in Pennsylvania produced 2.9 billion in direct output and nearly 7.3 billion of additional activity. Yet, warehousing is strongly tied to household spending and consumption, and any change that affects that portion of the national economy, such as rising fuel or food prices, we're facing an imminent war which could definitely affect this, will likely affect this industry as well. Also, warehousing has some of the lowest income and job multipliers of any sector in the Pennsylvania economy. Although Pennsylvania gained warehousing jobs, warehousing relative weak, backward purchases, links stimulated few additional jobs, and spurred little wage and income growth in other sectors of our economy. Warehousing growth by itself produces very little in the way of a broad ripple effects the positive links stimulated few additional jobs, and spurred little wage and income growth in other sectors of our economy. Warehousing growth by itself produces very little in the way of a broad ripple effects that positively affect and influence other economic indicators. U.S. board are not considering the impact on the highway system, which has, according to one study, truck traffic increased 216%. This is really important. While the capacity of the interstate highway system only increased 18% since 1980. How are you gonna handle these trucks? They're gonna be sitting there. Economic growth in warehousing and trucking can provide jobs for people and new tax bases for municipalities unless tax requirements or tax incentives are used. With respect to infrastructure and the environment, however, these activities place additional burdens on an already overburdened highway system and generate air quality, water quality, and land use impacts that can reach far beyond their survey footprints. The results indicate that warehousing displays relatively weak purchasing links to other sectors. This is my argument against this multiplier.
Chris, can you wrap up shortly? Your time's up.
In this case, an argument can be made that both warehousing and trucking are passive industries that cannot produce the desired effects that you want. And I really urge you to read that particular thing, I'll give you a copy if I have it.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Barbara, I think. Is that your hand?
Good evening. I'm Barbie Lerner. I own the property on the corner of 747th and 17th K. I'd like to remind the board that you've been served with a complaint petition regarding the zoning of one of the properties included in this project. It would be inappropriate to even entertain any IDA benefit for this project until a decision has been rendered by the court. Since you're proceeding with this public hearing, I have the following comments.
I'm sorry, I'd like to interrupt.
Go ahead, Barbara.
This board has not been served with any complaint.
The IDA is listed.
It is, it is not, but I'd love to see it if that's the case.
I believe I have a copy.
I would love to see that.
After my comments, I will have a session. Excuse me. I've been trying to connect the dots on those company representatives, people, companies that are listed since 1918, excuse me, 2018. With each generation, it becomes more and more complicated. It's like trying to connect the dots on a Jewish sarah painting, except that when you step back from one of his paintings, everything comes into focus. Here, everything becomes more confusing. We finally know that Amazon, it's been verified, I should say, that Amazon will be the ultimate occupant. But prior to that, and this goes back to transparency again, there was Blue Water Industrial Partners, then there was Blue Water One, then there was Blue Water Property Group, but I was told about this in March of 2019. They never bothered to tell the planning board until July. Then you had, Blue Water One transfers everything to USCF Sailfish. And then that winds up going to USAA Eagle Real Estate Multi-Sector Partnership and U.S. Real Estate Limited Partnership. No names, no addresses initially, and then just the addresses, but no contacts within the application itself. On Page 16, the society finally states the site will be subsidized. Now we know that it is being subsidized to Abboton. This is a Fortune 100 company. Excuse me. In other words, this for-for-profit company has a greater financial basis than the entire town of Montgomery. It's asking the residents, taxpayers, and businesses to subsidize their business so that they can make a greater profit. This project anticipates hiring 800 people, with 25 of those being managerial positions. And the wage isn't enough to support a family or even an individual in this town. Will these be really new jobs or will they just be transferred from the other warehouses that are along Millie Town Road that still have or higher signs in front of them? Your typical commuter, since it was stated in the FEIS that these jobs would likely come from outside the area, buys gas, coffee, and sometimes an occasional lunch. The follow-up benefits on Page 37 are laffable. Eaters and restaurants for people to make little more than minimum wage. Offices and janitorial supplies for a company that carries these products. Local hotels. Even the transportation benefit is almost nil as Amazon is increasing their own delivery fleet and would rarely use local services. Even more troubling is the fact that the Orange and Orange Partnership did prepare the multiplier. Since the partnership brought this project to the town, it's not an unbiased source. The original application from 2018 listed the current tax payment of $44,639,000. The 2019 application still uses the same number, it's just sloppy. The FEIS states that there is no bulk storage of fuel, but the application for assignment lists hydrogen fuel storage tanks as something for which they're looking for sales taxes at AID. We've addressed the wastewater treatment plants. The expense that's stated, one and a half million dollars, is a cost of doing business. When I prepare a bid for a project, I have an expense incurred and it includes engineering and legal, along with all of the other silly, uh, items. This is a cost of doing business, it's not really applicable. The number of related parties continues to expand and I'm wondering if you have really done your due diligence prior to tonight, finding out who these companies are, what their reputations are, who the individuals are, and verifying whether the information presented is actually true. Exhibit E is honestly funny, as it notes that it was updated with 2019 mileage rates. Added to all of the other errors, this cannot be excused as a simple typo. The number of errors and omissions should automatically disqualify this from even being considered. The fact that you're bringing this forward is inexcusable. As a businessperson, if I went to my bank with a business plan that had this many errors, omissions, and uncorroborated statements, my application would be summarily rejected. You have a moral obligation to every resident, every business, and every taxpayer in the town of Montgomery, and I expect you to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara.
Don Berger, Village Montgomery. I'm just gonna rehash a few of the things, a few of the people I've already spoken about. I wanna reiterate what I had talked about to this board here last month, and that's my objections of Mr. Stoddard sitting on this board today, making any decisions. We know we have an ethics complaint with him that's been completed. He shouldn't be sitting here, he shouldn't be running any decisions, he shouldn't be voting. With that being said, my concern's part to Mr. Stoddard is that we have a local law that was created that was penned by Mr. Stoddard. That was back in March. As you know, this applicant came here and asked them to reduce the local law from 85 to 60%. Mr. Stoddard was for that. So you figure, you know, you do it one time, what about it? And all of a sudden, this passed on December, at your December 3 meeting, Stewart Holdings shows up. And what happened at Stewart Holdings, that everybody might know, that's that. I don't know what that is over there by Shopplank.
Hey, Don, we're talking about the project.
This is about the project. This is about the project, if you let me continue. We're worried about the local labor. Over at the Stewart Holdings, they had no local labor when it came to the steelworkers and you allowed it to pursue. I object to that. Furthermore, this Amazon, now that we know who they are, I was gonna hold off on this, but since we know who they are, I guess I'm gonna bring it up. All you union guys who sit on this board here, you should be really concerned about Amazon. In the past quarter of this past year, 2019, there has been many, many, many complaints about Amazon and working conditions in their facilities.